All right, welcome to the November 10, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I'd like to invite Harold up and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll all stand.
We'll all stand. Put your hand over, right hand over your heart, face the flag. Recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms.
Why don't you come up just a little bit over here? Yeah, introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Ronald Sanderson. I'm training the world. We have a brief reading that's been submitted by our absent secretary, Lisa Thorne. This is a piece of poetry by Joanna Fuchs entitled "The Noble and the Brave: A Veterans' Day Tribute." When America had an urgent need, these brave ones raised a hand. No hesitation held them back. They were proud to take a stand. They left their friends and family. They gave up normal life. To serve their country and their God, they plowed into the strife. They fought for freedom and for peace on strange and foreign shores. Some lost new friends, some lost their lives in long and brutal wars. Other veterans answered a call to support the ones who fought. Their country had requirements for the essential skills they brought. We salute every one of them, the noble and the brave, the ones still with us here today and those who rest in a grave. So here's to our country's heroes that are cut above the rest. Let us give the honor that is due to our country's very best. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the first thing on our agenda, the second thing now, is the continuation of the special permit hearing for the Finnerty Francis care of Jim Finnerty located at One Goodrich. Michael, do you have the...
Oh, is he here?
Yeah, Jim's right there.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, come up.
He's got to bring up the...
We're just, we just opened the hearing. We're going to reopen the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion when we open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Patrick.
All right, so you've revised the... We have a revised map. I've seen it. I'll see if you can say it again. It's all no more nonconforming than, than the current...
No greater nonconformity.
No greater nonconformity.
Yep.
I did have a chance to talk to the neighbors and they have no objection. So do we, do you want to do anything else or can we just close the public hearing and we'll vote?
You still need to see if anybody has a concern.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Thank you for your service.
Is, uh...
Get anybody on?
We only have a couple.
Do we have any, anyone want to speak for or against Jim's deck on his property at One Goodrich Street? Anybody? Hearing none? All right, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
The evidentiary portion.
The evidentiary closing portion of the public hearing. This is why you're supposed to give me the cheat sheet.
I know.
Yeah.
No second.
All's in favor?
Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Jamie.
Aye, Patrick. Okay.
Discussion among the board.
Discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you guys have any problems?
I have no issue.
I have no issue.
They're in watch that measurement, but that has nothing to do with anything. So I make a motion, we accept the special permit.
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion, we close the hearing. Or is that it? Or is it already closed? Yes, second?
No, that's the close.
Right. Thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
And a vote to close it.
I make a motion, we close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jim. All right, that was easy. All right, it'll take me six months. I almost have it down by heart. All right, next one is St. Paul's Church Light Show. Mr. Bradway, come up to the podium here.
Where do you want me to be?
Right here.
So...
Introduce yourself. Wait, introduce yourself. You got to do that.
Hi, there.
You can sit down if you like or not.
Okay. Oh, that'd be great. I just ran here. And I'll bring up some stuff so you can, we're going to have visual aids.
Just to frame it, you're doing a show.
Yeah, so we have, so there's an event at St. Paul's Church on Saturday, December 10th. It's a choral group that's going to be singing on the inside. And long story short is that they don't typically perform up here in our neck of the woods. They usually perform down in northwest Connecticut and possibly sometimes in Great Barrington. And St. Paul's is also looking at ways to kind of bring broader awareness to the church beyond just it being a church. So in working with them, we kind of came up with an idea of doing a very artistic light show that would basically project projections against the church while the concert's going on inside. The way the format would work is that people who wanted to go see the concert would go inside and watch the concert. There is admission for that concert inside, but we would not be charging admission for people to look at the church from the outside. What we would be doing is just projecting these lights up against the church. And we would be projecting images that are basically, you know, stained glass windows of the church and other elements of the church and possibly some video elements from, you know, capturing some of the choral stuff that's going on the inside and sort of just creating this nice artistic thing. To give you a sense of what I'm talking about, this was done last year at Hancock Shaker Village by Joe Wheaton, and Joe Wheaton is the person who you'd be using for this purpose. So here's an example of what they, he did with projecting.
Happy.
Did I already lose it? There we go. So this is where he just sort of projected lights and stuff against the, against the barn. And, you know, it's part of their light show. There could be some motion on it, so just to give an example of what that means is like, it could look something like that. Okay? The duration of this show would take place between, sorry, I'm trying to pause it now. I'll just turn on the volume.
You get a release from the chicken?
Yeah. So the concert is between 6:00 and 7:30 on that Saturday night. We've talked with Michael and the police chief to sort of get the clearance on like all the logistics of this. We don't anticipate more than 250 people, so we're looking at like just whoever might be in town, looking at stuff. There might be people at the Red Line Inn across the street, sitting on the porch to look at it. But it's just a way to kind of create something that's a little different and to sort of bring some light and such to, to the town for, for this particular event. The church is not, like I said, we're not asking for donation, or admission, but we, the church is asking for donations to the food pantry if anyone wanted to, but they don't have to, to, to simply watch the stuff. Everything seemed good with Michael and the police chief. The one thing that Joe requested that might be a little different than what I told you was that we were going to, in the plan that I submitted as part of the permit, Joe wanted to request the parking lot, a parking space that is one space west of the fire hydrant space in front of the church so that he could put his projector there to project on it. And, you know, Darrell had indicated that they would just cone off it the night before so that he could do that and set up the next day. Joe requested if it would be possible, and I can say no, is if we, if he could set up his, not the projector, but all this stuff that would go in that space and basically cone it off and cover it all up so that it's all kind of built because it, it helps him, if he does that the night before, to be able to get everything in place so that when...
December 10th?
December 10th, yeah.
Should be pending any snow.
Obviously. If it's, if there's any, if there's any blizzard...
There's snow for that night. I mean, if it's for that night, we have to do it in the morning.
You wouldn't be doing this.
Right, okay.
So, but it basically, if it's, if it's raining or snowing that day, we probably...
If it snows that night, he, he has to clean the street, he'll have to set that up in the morning.
Sure, okay. But if we didn't, would it be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as Darrell's fine with it.
So this is basically just the first stab at it. You know, I talked with the Red Line Inn just to let them know that this would be happening too if we get permission.
I would love it.
What's that?
I would be selling hot chocolate and stuff.
They may, may very well be.
He won't get...
It's just a quiet thing. There might be some, obviously because there's a concert going on, there would probably be some sound emanating.
The timing is, that timing is not an issue.
And it's, but it's cool music and it's, it's holiday music, so it's not anything crazy. So we just came here to submit the permit for getting that.
Right, I think it's...
Hoping that you'll...
It really adds something to the town in the quiet time. So it's, it's, yes, I'm very impressed with it.
So we want to make a motion to approve the license?
I'll make a motion, we approve this request.
No second.
It's a license, all right?
It's a one-day entertainment license.
We have a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're done. Thank you so much. Yeah, come on down. Tweak some canned food. Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's see. Next we have, Michael, you're going to talk a little bit about the fabulous program for November 16th with Mr. Joshua Hall discussing the history of Stockbridge with a Thanksgiving theme.
Yeah, it's going to be November 16th at 3 o'clock here. We're going to have refreshments, including apple pie and pumpkin pie will be served. It's a little later in the afternoon than our normal luncheon that we're trying to do once a month is have guest speakers. So far, the opening one was myself, the following one was Police Department, this one is Joshua Hall, who's going to speak about the history of Stockbridge with a Thanksgiving theme.
And Joshua works at the Museum and Archives?
And, and everyone knows him. It's great. So we're going to, from my understanding, the pie will be served right initially, right at 3:00 so that folks won't have to interrupt their dinner appetite, will have a little time to digest it. And, and it sounds like it's going to be delicious and fun. And, and we have shuttles available to bring people from in court or how do we, is there... If there's a request for transportation, they should contact us.
Okay, great. We'll leave it like that. And, and did you resolve when the, what time the luncheon is going to be or...
No, I will.
Okay.
We'll do it that way. We're getting all the names, numbers of people that have it and we'll be getting back to them.
Right.
Confirming their time and everything.
So, so basically, if you got a flyer from the town on the luncheon, the Red Line Inn Luncheon is back on this year. There's no vouchers. It's going to be a luncheon. The date on that is December 13th, I think, before I say so. Whatever the day on the flyer is, that's the date. All you need to do is call the number on it, which is for the Council on Aging, and say that you want to RSVP and someone will get back to you with the specifics with a callback. So no worries. I would RSVP soon because I believe there's about 88 seats. And so, you know, that's, that's what the capacity is. And so after 88, you know, we're full. So excellent. All right, next thing, discussion of ongoing paving projects. Hugh, you want to come up? All right, yeah, good.
Well, we're, we did some side streets in-house. We worked with, you know, with Camp Petty, Befoni, Viola, we've been in departments. We've been out doing some paving and all those other projects. We're looking forward to putting some other bigger projects out to bid for next year. We've got a nice little nest egg of money set, set aside to do some paving. We thought that if we hold back a little bit, the cost of paving will come down a little bit towards the spring, helping, helping. And so it'll stretch a little further. We'll also talk about maybe next year doing a, you know, towards the fall, we'll do a couple other side streets in-house and, you know, kind of work together and kind of get that moving along.
What are you planning, putting the bids out for the spring paving?
January. Yep.
Yeah, I think earlier...
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get through this little rush here. Yep.
In case you might get better bids for some contractors to book up to spring.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Hugh, are you going to do Route 183 at all?
Yes, there's sections of 183 North that we're going to work on. There's also Hawthorne Road that goes up to 183. There's a section there that I want to, want to get done. So those are a couple of key target areas. We got a couple of little side streets. Maybe we'll do them in-house next year, so.
We did a great job on the one by the firehouse.
I think so. I think...
I walk on it nightly.
I think a few departments come together, everybody brought a little skill set to it and we, we got through it and we got a little better the further we went. So hopefully we carry that same momentum next year, so.
It's the way it used to be.
It's the way it should be.
It's the way it used to be too. Now it's nice to have it back. Thank you.
Yep.
That's you and your crew and Tony and Mike and their crew.
Yep, and we were working with them a little bit on some of their stuff, so it's kind of becoming this, this great thing, so.
Well, tell them the way it should be.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Any questions from the public? Any, any issues that you've seen that we have to make sure that we address with paving? Anything at all?
Don't see any public.
There's like 300 people on this Zoom. I can't believe there's not more questions.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to let you know that we already had approval for 229,000 of our Chapter 90 to be used for paving and we received an additional 233,000. So we are...
And we can carry that over?
It all carries over. So right now, we're going to have about, you know, about 400, over 400,000 available. Obviously last spring, prices were out of control for a while there, so as was stated, will go out January.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next thing is the budget process overview.
Yeah, so just to, I went before the Finance Committee on a couple other issues and they asked me to just overview the budget of what's coming up. So in January, we'll begin the process of requesting from the various departments their requests for the upcoming year. Jamie, I sent you a copy of, I don't know if you had a copy of last year's Excel documents, so I did send those to you. So if you have any questions, please just reach out to me, but I will be continuing to build on those Excel sheets. And we'll be putting the budget together beginning in January. We'll fine tune it and then we'll move ahead. You know, the budget worksheet will continue to be developed and what it does is it gives us a lot of historical data, plus the current data, plus what's changing, so we can really monitor exactly what's going on. So I think overall, we'll, we'll be in real good shape moving forward. Did Chuck and Patrick said you guys were involved. Is there any tweaks you'd like to see to those documents that, I know one of the things was I might try to keep them better front page, because if you remember, they get, if I try to print it, it gets pretty...
I'd like to see the numbers go down, but you know, I've been there.
You know, stress for these departments to try to keep as level as possible.
Yeah.
You know, just do what you got to do, you know, the firm is...
Yeah, a lot of it's going to come as last year, we got hit with the fact we did increase all the, you know, the fuel, gas and oil by 20% because we knew, and I think that, that was a real good move on our part, which protects us from any shortfalls and that. So we'll continue to work on that and...
I think, I have a couple of questions. One is, is Microsoft Office installed on everyone's laptops? I don't generally use my town laptop.
It should be.
Do you guys...
I'm not sure about that.
Mine does.
It does have it? Okay, good.
It's supposed to have, yes.
Okay, because there was some issue like sign into Microsoft that I didn't understand. Looks like you're supposed to have like a email address to sign in, a Microsoft email address, but whatever.
All right, if there's an issue with that...
I just want to make sure. I don't, I use this cell on my Mac, so I don't, I don't need it, but, you know, but I was wondering if they needed it.
Yeah, it should be on there. Should be all be open. The other thing is, I did talk to them about is what remaining capital projects. So we've got, you know, we've got the Curtisville Bridge, which is still an object, we're still haven't quite the price tag on, and that's one of those remaining. Dredging is going to come up in the next couple of years for a cost. We have a potential walkway to Pine Woods, which is another capital item. So those are the three large-scale capital projects.
Tuckerman Bridge?
Well, the Tuckerman Bridge, the design's already happening and that was part of our $4 million borrowing, because that we knew about. The Average Road to Bridge, Tuckerman Bridge and the Salt Shad were all in that borrowing that we did last year, which was under, and we were, if you remember, that came in at 3% interest rate over the term. And, you know, interest rates now are pushing closer to 7%. So definitely a change in the market and the rest. So we'll have to think about it, but overall, we're strong, whether it's with stabilization funds or with free cash, so either of those. This year, we won't be generating nearly as much free cash because we upped all of our local receipts after lowering during the COVID period, but we really didn't see that impact. So there's a number of things playing, but overall, we're strong financially. We can review which options to use to fund these capital projects moving forward.
Now, so one of the things that we did is we put some, some reserves that were specifically targeted toward local receipts around COVID. Have we moved or will we move those into our general reserves?
Well, it's in what's called the dedicated stabilization account, which only town meeting can authorize anyways. Whether you move it back or not, when you go to authorize, you just say where you're taking it from. Right now, we have three stabilization accounts. We have one with 250,000 toward a fire truck. We have one with $1 million for the, in case we had shortfalls during the COVID year. And then we have 1.2 million in our general one. So as you can see...
And then we're going to, we're, I know it's not certified yet, but we're going to have, and most likely over a million on free cash.
Over a million, probably pushing closer to two in free cash.
And, and so we focused on, in the last few years, we focused on, on local receipts. Why don't you just explain a little bit like what, how that, how we've, how we're adjusting that to, you know, to basically close that free cash number?
So during the last couple, two budget cycles during COVID, one of which I was a part of, and one happened before me, was the town intentionally lowered its local receipts, not sure what would happen with visitation, with meals, taxes, room taxes and the rest. The good news was, we didn't get really impacted high by that. And I mean, just, so I'm not just throwing out numbers completely out, let me just call up the capital or our budget. So, no, I don't, why don't you go? So, a lot of those were artificially lowered in order to protect the town in case local receipts went down and we're now restoring. We talked about last year of putting those on to 85% of the actuals.
But we went with 80, I thought, last year.
Yeah, that. We were, we were, we were, last year, right, this year, we're going with 85% and we're going with 100% of the actuals in the room and meals tax because we increased last year room and meals tax from 4% to 6%. So we're comfortable with placing it at 100%. What that's done is we had before only about 1.3 million coming in in local receipts and now the local receipts will be over $2 million in our estimate, which will help lower the tax rate as we go into this tax season.
Right, and, but just to, just to understand for everyone, when he, when Michael says 100%, that's 100% of what the average of the past three years. Is that right?
No, 100% of the actual for last year.
Okay, so is the, then it's the actual for last year, but it's, it's a...
Last year was at two quarters of 4% and two quarters of 6%. So when I look back, we took in 623,000 over the last four quarters in rooms. And next year, at 100% of what we took in in fiscal year '22 was 566. So if, if it continues the way it is, that's about 60,000 under what we're taking in. So it's a comfortable number. The reason why you never want to go to 100% of all your local receipts is if you fail to meet them, then we end up in a negative deficit and that's something we don't want to create. So this still leaves us an overall cushion of about 300,000 in local receipts from what we expect to take in versus what we're estimating toward the tax rate. So we think that is a much better one. The budget typically returns 300,000 to 500,000 in local receipts and that creates our, I mean in...
Free cash.
Depending on what come, how the budget ends up playing out, which then creates our free cash. Finance Committee and Select Board had agreed in the past that we should have 10% of our budget in free cash and 10% of our budget in stabilization in reserves. So that is about 1.4 million. So we are, right now, well above that. And that's why over the next couple of budget cycles, we need to think about how to strategically use those reserves that we have so that we're not placing any undue burden on the tax.
We have, we have, we have what, two, we have almost 4 million between what we're going to have in free cash this year and the three other stabilization funds you've listed. And so, you know, what we're, we're really looking at is, in my mind, is how we generate as little free cash as possible and/or how we fund as many capital projects as possible to try to get that number down to the target number over the next couple of years. So, you know, and, and why I bring it up is we're also, we're not waiting, I mean, the next, the budget that we're going to work on starting in January is for fiscal year '24, you know, so we're not waiting. We're, we've already been looking at ways we can apply these numbers, which we can legally do. I think that the assessors lowered the, the overlay by 50,000 and we actually are going to go with these numbers on the 85% for local receipts and 100% for, for meal, for, for occupancy and meals to set this year's tax rate, which impacts that fiscal year '23 budget and which will actually lower, my guess, and this is an official, my guess is that'll take about 30 cents off what the tax, the tax rate otherwise would have been. And I, and the point I'm just making is, you know, there's been obviously some disagreements on how to, you know, keep the taxes down as much as possible. We're doing everything we can to do that, so because I know that some folks have been concerned about that and I think it's really important that we, you know, that we work really hard to kind of, now that COVID's over, bring the budget in line with, you know, you know, we don't necessarily have to cut anything, we just have to make sure that we're budgeting as accurately as we can based on, because the budget is what sets the tax rate. So, you know, anyways.
Yep. Good.
All right. Is that it? Any questions on the budget? Excellent. Done that one. All right, so the next thing is for, for some time, our Green Communities Committee and Michael have been, and been discussing this program that Michael actually put together called the Community Electric Aggregation Program. He, if I get anything wrong, just let me know. Something like nine years ago, you pulled together 18 communities in the Berkshires to aggregate their electric negotiations with, with the supplier and lock in a rate. And unfortunately, Stockbridge didn't join that program, so those, those communities got no increase November 1st. We got hit with, I think National Grid went up something like 64% on November 1st. And so we're now working to, in the next cycle, try to get into this program to create some smoothing and some predictability so we don't have our consumers here in Stockbridge impacted by these kind of increases. So do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. So municipal aggregation, each community goes in on its own to create a municipal aggregation program. There's only one true collaborative, which is the Cape Cod Light Compact, which is one entity, which does it for the whole Cape. What we did here in Berkshire County is we said, well, instead of each of us going out individual, we'll each set up our individual plans, but we'll agree to put the load together, which, once you put the load together, you become more attractive to other people. Obviously having Pittsfield, North Adams, Dalton has a high electric because of their industrial bases. So you end up with these numbers that allow you to go out and gain, uh, these. We never liked talking, one thing when we went out, we never sold it on the fact that it might save money. What it does is allow you to lock in a stable electric rate for three to five years. So right now the current Berkshire aggregation program runs through November of 2023. And what we're talking about now is getting one set up here so we can join in with the rest of the communities as they go to move forward. At first we were debating whether or not, um, you and Laura had talked with, with the consultants about this, about whether or not we should hurry to get into the next one. But the most likely the next one, they're only going to probably go out a year because the market's so volatile that the opposite of them going out long-term. But we definitely want to get ourselves in a position that the next time they go to lock in long-term, that where we get into that. And historically they've done better than the market, um, but not always sometimes. So National Grid, so people know every six months National Grid goes out and, and sells its load. So what happens a lot of time with National Grid, the rates come down in the summer and then go up in the winter. And with an aggregation program, your, your rates stay level for three to five years. So, you know, the advantages for the electric companies are they're selling a guaranteed amount out three to five years. The, you know, the disadvantages, you don't always know what the market's doing. So for some reason the market did go way down, you wouldn't see the savings. The reason why I think it's a better idea for us to join with the Berkshire County one is then we're not getting compared against our neighbors. It would be us and our neighbors all in the same boat. And that was the whole selling point originally when it started. We're all getting the same rate, guys. We all went out. None of us have crystal balls.
So you can go out to bid and make it competitive. And, and that, that creates the, you know, there's a market, you know, you've got, you've got leverage when you have, we're piggybacking on North Adams, Pittsfield, like you said, and Dalton and all these other towns.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a whole lot more negotiating leverage. You know, if you call up National Grid, they're likely to say, you know, eat dirt if you ask them to lower your electric rate as an individual. So, you know, nicely, I mean, but yeah.
So we're working on that. The Green Communities Committee is going to, we've only talked about it a couple of times, but it's picked up a little steam as people have realized what's happened to the communities around us. And we'd really like to get into it. I'd like to see us in it because it is a program that I put together over the years.
And so, so you know, we, you, there was some talk a week or two ago about trying to get us in for this next negotiation. And that would require, because it has to have town meeting approval.
It has to have town meeting.
That, and that, and that, that's going to go out to bid in the spring.
Yeah.
And so we'd have to have a special town meeting to get into that one.
You'd have to have a special and DPU right now is so far behind that it probably won't make a difference anyways.
But however, if they, if they make a decision to go beyond a year for the, the aggregation group, I do think we should strongly consider, uh, a special town meeting as soon as possible to just get our, you know, get it approved, uh, so that we're not locked out for years to come.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. And no matter what, we would line up any agreement to line up with the next one. That's what we'd be targeting anyway.
But the next one is five years out. I don't, I don't want to get, I don't want to wait. I mean, personally.
Yeah.
I would rather, if it's, if it's a year, like you're saying, that's fine. But if they all of a sudden decide that, you know, you know, uh, they, they just want to do it once and, once and, you know, one and done, you know, then, okay.
I mean, I, the work that I've done with the consultants, they're, they're pretty spot on. They understand the market. And so for November of next year, they'll be going out in like April. And the odds of between now and April of the market stabilizing is probably slim to none. And that was, that was their language because right now, and that just makes long-term buying right now very fraught. Well, three years ago when they locked in the last one that took them through November 23, the markets were stable. So, yeah, there's probably very little chance that they'll be going out long-term, if any. So. But we'll see how quickly we can get together the application and get it together. And, you know, if we have it all wrapped up by like January or whatever, maybe then we say, all right, do we hold one minute?
Actually, one other, any other questions on municipal aggregation? Anybody out there? Anybody out there?
There's already Wendy.
I, I had, I had one other question on the budget for you is in the, in the, the long-term new borrowing, not that it's on the books now, but any new borrowing that you did, what was the implicit, uh, interest rate that, that you were using for the, as you, as you go out?
Well, I, I haven't, I look at it when we're, when we're anticipating a borrowing. So right now I didn't anticipate anything in the future. The last one, when I-
Well, we put in this, we put in the potential new school borrowing in the long-term budget.
I, I haven't put any number in for the long term.
We had a five-year budget that had some of the predictions of if this-
No, what I had was the prediction of what we would remove, which was, remember we put the one point, we put some money aside to pay down this building's debt in order to lower the amount. But we said at the time that I didn't have any guess on what the school would be because I knew the school would be going out at the best this spring, if not the spring after. Interest rates were just so crazy. The only thing I estimated at that time was what that four million one would be, which I had about two, two and three quarter points. And I ended up coming in at three. So that was pretty close to what we wanted. Um, so, um, yeah, I don't know. That's going to be one of the biggest challenges with the new school discussion is where interest rates will.
Yeah. Because, uh, you know, the, the smart money is saying that they're, they just increased it three quarters of a point. And they're saying there's two more coming next month and the month after. And I just want to make sure, because I saw one of those, uh, those merger slides that suggested the rate was going to be three and a quarter percent for the new school. And that's insane. It's going to be a lot higher. So, you know.
I mean, the biggest problem with that is you can't borrow on anticipation.
Oh, right.
So until the votes happen and the schools bend, they can't even think of locking in any interest rates. So we're probably at least this next town meeting or more likely the town meeting after that and where interest rates will be. Yeah. If any of us could predict that, we'd be on Wall Street.
No, but to the degree that you're doing any, any forecasting based on what we're going to have to do, like whether it's, you know, I mean, free cash. I mean, the stabilization and reserves are only going to go so far to pay for capital projects and-
Yeah, we'll touch the schools.
Yeah, no. And, and, and so we're going to want to make sure that we don't underestimate what it might be.
Right now I don't even think we can estimate.
All right.
I mean, we could run a bunch of scenarios and just, but they're going to tell us very little because we just don't know where it's going to be when it goes out. And that's really, that one's a very difficult one. I believe it's 25 years. So, you know, we've talked about before that, uh, anything at 8% doubles the cost.
Right. Right. Yep. Okay. Uh, uh, next item, take action on one day alcohol license to botanical garden. And a holiday marketplace preview party. And an art open, I'm sorry, art open on November 11th from five to seven and a holiday marketplace preview party in December 2nd, five to seven. Did you guys have a chance to review those one day licenses? Are we okay with them?
I make a motion, we accept those licenses.
All right.
I second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any public comment? Anyone want to sing? Cause we know it's, it's been a quick meeting. Uh, all right.
Hands are up.
What?
No hands are up.
No hands are up. All right. And that, we have a motion adjourned.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.